All right, we're gonna start the April 21st meeting of Norbert Borough Council. Call to order. First item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Charles in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge allegiance is to the flag. To the citizens of the nation under God, in the name of the Lord, the Lord, and the God of all.
Ms. Brandt, will you call the all?
Absolutely. Council President Fred Bush?
Here.
Council Vice President Michelle Panopoulos?
Here.
Council Member Barbara Fortner?
Here.
Council Member Rob McGrady?
Here.
Council Member Cindy Rickards? Council Member Bob Weisborn?
Here.
Council Member Ira Winston?
Here.
Mayor Andrew Deutsch?
Here.
All right. Next item is a consideration of agenda additions or changes. We have, currently on our agenda, we have two presentations that are scheduled for the end of the meeting. I would like to suggest that they be moved to the beginning of the meeting in order to not keep our guests here while we go through all the rest of the presentation. So like to entertain a motion? Okay, so I would
Second.
I'll need to say exactly
Yeah, so items 12A and 12B to move to item five on the agenda?
Yeah, sure. Well, that'd be before public comment.
So maybe not to item eight?
All right. So we have a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion of this motion? All right, all those in favor of moving the two presentations to the eight, I guess it'll be A prime or the right after the consent agenda? All those in favor of moving these presentations? Thank you, so we now have eight prime, which will be eight prime A will be the presentation from the Norbert Community Food Bank. And eight prime B will be the presentation from Montgomery County RDA. Is that clear verbally? All right, great. Are there any other agenda additions or changes? All right, let's move on to my comments. I have no comments today. Ms. Mayor, do you have a report?
I do, yes. Um, uh, thank everyone who helped organize last night's Square the Circle presentation. A number of our friends and neighbors showed up to give their ideas on how to best use our station circle, and it was some really great ideas. Um, there are two more meetings coming up, one in two weeks from yesterday and one in two weeks from then. I'd like to encourage anybody with ideas on how to best use our station circle to come and join the conversation and participate and so that we can get the best out of our borough. Uh, and that's something I would include. Uh, next, um, now that we are at full employment with our parking enforcement, parking enforcement has started throughout the borough. That means meter parking is monitored as it's two-hour zones. So please be aware of that if you need a, if you're a resident whose house or residence is on a two-hour zone and you need a parking sticker. If you already have a red parking sticker, that will suffice, but if you have a new car or you've moved into the neighborhood recently and you don't have one of those stickers on your vehicle, please get one from the borough office. They're just a few dollars and it will allow you to park in front of your street if you have a two-hour zone in front of your street without limitation. Um, and that is it. Thank you.
All right.
Just briefly correct the dates on the, for the town square charade. In case anyone is paying attention and writing on your calendar, the next one is indeed two weeks from last night. So that's 20th, but then the next one is the fourth, but the third meeting is three weeks after that.
I'm sorry, my apologies.
The last meeting will be May 25th.
My apologies.
No worries.
All right, and Ms. Brandt, if you just want to go over the procedure for getting a parking sticker? Just walk into the office and request one, or is there two?
So if you go on the borough website, under the parking page, there are instructions on how to get one. You can do it either by coming to the borough office. We generally prefer to get vehicle registration to verify the vehicle make and model and the air hose in the borough. Um, and then, or there is an online nothing to do it as well, where you can submit the information to borough staff and they'll mail you a parking sticker. So all that information can be found on the parking page of the borough website.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay. Uh, next item is public comments. All right, so I guess we usually do the
Setting my due zoom, all right, Curtis first?
Yeah, well, we'll do the in-person first. All right, so I'll start at the back of the room. Just stand up if you have public comments. Carol Marie, do you have public comments?
Yes, I do. Uh, Charlotte Stanley Avenue. I would like to, first of all, remind council that if you're speaking with masks on, you really need to be very, very to speak loudly and that would help. I'd like to voice my support as well as friends of Sabine Park's support for the Norbert Food Bank Plan for 201 Sabine. The plan will expand the park, add much needed services to Norbert as well as our surrounding community without changing the footprint of the existing building while removing the cost of the building to the taxpayers of Norbert. With the Food Bank Plan, Norbert has the opportunity to make an ADA park that will be the flagship park for Norbert and Montgomery County at no cost to Norbert. Norbert could be a showcase for how it's done and how community works together with future residents of Norbert. Norbert absolutely does not need new development, does not need new commercial space, especially no new housing anywhere on the property, especially on the park side of 201. With 180 new apartments being added in our one half-square mall borough, we need park space. As it stands, Norbert is worth some efficient on open space according to the National Park Standards. This council has the opportunity to have open space protection on our park. You asked time and time again, and you have refused to do this. The question is now, why are you going to spend $1.1 million on a one-acre property of three ellwood to do the showmanship of open space protection when we already have crisis properties, crisis open land that need our protection? Also, this council has pledged multiple times that there would be community engagement with lands for Sabine Park. Nothing has been done since 2019. There are three open public forums for a square circle, a circle-square, but the second largest property in Norbert is getting no community engagement, and that's just a travesty. Community spoke, in 2019 spoke loud and clear, "Do not touch a blade of grass" on 201 Sabine's park. We would like to say a council cannot see the clarity of executive food bank proposal to protect our open space, relieve taxpayers of the burden that hit the aging 201 building, expand community services and makes a brand-new flagship, not to mention the only ADA park in Montgomery County. This council really has no choice but to make that property a park from corner to corner, serving all of the community. That's a comment that I'm saying about 201 time and time again. I do have a quick also addition. I've talked to Samantha about this. When we have our junk, I'm totally changing subjects here, but we'll get back on, you know, you know my feeling on 201. And again, I want it on camera with the community to know how important it is to keep this property. Now, you know, we have our big trash week. It is so saddening that so much good stuff is put out to the curb and goes out to the dumpsters, goes out to landfill. You remember a few years ago Habitat for Humanity came and everything was drop off at St. Margaret's. People picked stuff up and then Habitat for Humanity picked stuff up and then the rest was out for trash. I contacted the Philadelphia Furniture Bank. I saw them, I saw a book about them and I thought they were interesting. What they do is they take furniture, it's like a food bank, mostly for Philadelphia or surrounding areas where it needs it. So I would like to see Norbert partner with the Philadelphia Furniture Bank. I've contacted them. I have a phone call with them tomorrow to discuss concrete or semi-concrete plans on how they can come during trash week. So you know, Monday, the first day is Conway Avenue or whatever streets. They would come do those streets and then the next day they come. That would be a greater way to recycle rather than landfill. It's amazing how much good stuff is actually there. So that I would like to get your nod to approve that we can discuss it again, but we need to get this done sooner than later because big trash week is in like six weeks. So we don't want to wait until next council meeting.
Um, so thank you for your help with this, Carol Marie. As we've discussed a couple times now, I love your enthusiasm for this and all the help you're providing to the borough in making this happen. Um, my intentions are that, you know, once you talk to the Furniture Bank and you and I can connect again next week, that I'll have a proposal put together for Borough Council for their May 5th work session. And that way we can get things figured out in time to do the marketing and advertising.
Because we do need to market it, we need to advertise it so people should know to do it rather than just put their junk out. Maybe they have something that they haven't thought about, a cash they haven't thought about throwing and recycling. We can then encourage people to give back and give to others.
Sure, and I think the May 5th meeting, I think it should still be plenty of time to solidify the community.
Right, it's just less than a month at the May 5th meeting.
I think we're not quite ready to, you know, to vote on right now. I think we need more details, but May 5th should be a listen-up talk. So, see you then.
But I still, I can't hear you with a mask on, so I will speak up. Thank you.
I will speak up. Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Oh, sorry, you. Go ahead.
Well, I would like to say that kids need parks and not go to the We need to keep Sabine Park a park, we need not put it up on the Parks are a part of the layout of the We need to stay outside and not be inside of the streets. If you don't save them far, we're away from that. Sabine Park is much nicer to leave inside. Please not go on Sabine Park.
Thank you.
I just wondered
If you can give your name and your address.
Rosalie Greslin under the 208 Sabine Avenue. I've worked with her for six years. That might be a lot of other people in the career. Um, I had two comments. One, it seems to me just a year or so ago in the middle of the pandemic, there were proposals made and surveys done and community input. What was going to happen across the street from where I live, if I do it correctly, across the street from the building. And now I don't know where those things have gone. Now, these other proposals will come, which seem to me to differ slightly and align too with what we heard the last time. So I'm curious about why this is happening to play. The other thing I wanted to comment about is about the one-way street, uh, to that block of Sabine Avenue. And I saw the report, the engineering report about pretty more signage at the entrance exit to the parking lot. Let me just comment that I have never, ever seen anybody turn left coming out of that parking lot. That is really not the issue, people using the parking lot inappropriately. The issue, and I don't know how to solve this, but the issue is people deliberately, whether they look at the signs or not, but going from Essex, the corner of Essex to Sabine, going straight up Sabine to Montgomery because they don't want to go down the long and narrow side. But it has nothing to do with parking. It never happens. I'm not sitting up there all day watching, but believe me, it will see you. You get to see it. But what I do see is cars zooming up the street from Essex to Montgomery. And if occasionally somebody's coming the other way, tries to alert them and sometimes people are surprised and sometimes they're not. That's what's been happening. So I don't see that parking on the side of the street would help anything. I think if I did. Well, first of all, there is parking on both sides of the street, both buildings. There's a parking parked there all the time, right? Where it's supposed to be and not, I'm not sure that they are. And so if you extend that up to the corner of Montgomery Avenue, I think we're just going to make it more dangerous if you're coming down the street the right way and somebody's parking up the wrong way. And now there are cars on both sides. Yeah, I would think that's so.
Thank you. Sir, we'll talk. On the cover, open for public comment. All right, let's move to online.
All right, so for everyone on Zoom, just, you know, everyone's been set so you cannot unmute yourself given the volume of people we have on Zoom here tonight. So what I want people to do is, current usual sort of protocol here is either use the Zoom raise hand function or the, or just literally raise your hand. And I will call on you and you'll see a prompt on your screen to be able to unmute. And then you're welcome to make your public comment.
We're going to limit it to three minutes.
Limit it to three minutes. So who all would like to make public comments tonight? Uh, so I believe I see first up here, Mr. Lawrence Goldberg.
Hi, good evening. Let me start my timer. Uh, so I guess I'll ask a question. Is this a view in your work life or maybe personal life or both? Where you have a problem and you're looking everywhere for a solution and you end up in the search for a solution creating a whole and often worse set of problems than problems you're trying to solve? And for self-aware, I wish I had thought of that, or I wish I'd listened to other people telling me to watch out for this or for that. I think that applies to the issue 201 Sabine. We've got a pretty straightforward set of problems. The, the main problem I'd say is a critical lack of green space in the borough and absence of any other place where the, where green space for the good of the entire public can be expanded. That's, that's, that's the number one problem. The number two problem is you have an aging building that's not economically sustainable. Obvious solution, and the one that residents and neighbors have been saying over and over again, the majority of us for two years now, is to expand the park, the green space, address that problem and to, to remove the building that's there, which I think is already a foregone conclusion. Talking about development, the possibility of any kind of redevelopment on the street is really going against the will of the residents, your comprehensive plan and all logic. You're creating a whole new set of problems with traffic, opposition for neighbors, with, you know, possible legal issues, with possible ethical issues on how the process may be done, with the mixture of public and private getting into a long-term tenant landlord relationship, which I think the borough should be out of. A whole host of problems you could be creating to consider this possible to that, those other sets of problems. So I ask you, anyone else is asking you, is consider the obvious solution, and that is expansion of green space. And I would say the same thing for the parking issue. We're in, you guys know where our house is. We're on 200. We're in era of the wrong way turns problem. You can see it from our bay window or from our porch. So when people turn, I'll tell you exactly what the problem is. People off of Essex, there's two versions. One version is we don't care and they know it's one way and they're, they're, they're going to go no matter what you do. So put them aside because you can't help those people except for possibly ticketing. The second problem, and the majority of it, I believe, is people turning off of Essex because they're rushing and they're not paying attention. The solution in the memo to the borough is to place two signs that say no right turn and no left turn. One on Essex facing each direction. That's the problem. People are turning off of Essex onto Sabine without seeing the two small one-way signs. And I believe there's probably not a whole lot of people coming out of daycare. They came into the, if they are even parking there, they came in so they know that it's a one-way street.
Thank you, Mr. Goldberg. Your time is up.
If you give me
Sorry, Mr. Goldberg. Thank you.
All right, uh, let's see here. I would like to request public comment from, from anyone else on the anyone else in the public who'd like to make public comment here tonight? All right, I don't see any other hands raised on Zoom or any other hands physically raised. Uh, here we go. Sorry about that.
Hi, my name is Gina Agvajara. I'm at 201 Sabine Avenue. I would just like to echo, you know, basically what Carol Marie and Lawrence are saying. We really do need to maintain that green space. We're expanding, you know, houses are expanding their footprint just beyond the, the need for green space for people to play and be in and be outside. You know, we're expanding so many of the footprints of housing in this area. You know, just borough is in need of, of areas that are just green and can take on some of the greenness environmentally. Um, you know, we need that area to stay. Um, and what I would say is just so many people on this street. I have to give them a lot of credit for maintaining that park, spending their own time and money and making that effort to maintain that. With respect to the parking on both sides of the street, it's a little silly. Given that we have a daycare where people are parked, kids are running, cars are already going really fast. Like, I can't believe there hasn't been an accident, a tragic one as of now, just because people are barreling down while parents are opening car doors in the middle of the street. And so to add to that, I think is just a dangerous situation.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right, I don't see any other hands raised for online public comment.
So Ms. Brandt, I notice people are bringing up parking on both sides of the street. Are we contemplating a change to the parking on that street?
Uh, I believe what people are referencing is that the most recent Public Health and Safety Committee meeting, there was a memo drafted by the Borough Traffic Engineer in regards to the concerns received about one-way traffic on Sabine Avenue. And that proposal is, you know, you know, taking action on with something that Public Health and Safety wants to look into. And that does call for making both sides of Sabine Avenue allowed for parking with the exception of the area right in front of the 201 Sabine property, given the comments made about, you know, the use of that property and those sort of concerns, as well as adding signage and indication at the driveway of 201 Sabine that right turns are not allowed. If it's, if it's, you know, I want to talk to the traffic engineer, but I do, I don't know if the if the concept of adding a no-left turn sign on Essex was something that he took a look at. Um, that is a question I would want to pose to the traffic engineer to see if he considered that or not.
Okay. Well, thanks everyone for your comments and it sounds like this will recommendations the traffic engineer will become in front of council at some point. I'm not sure exactly when.
Okay, to change the parking would require council to approve an ordinance to change our parking ordinance. Um, you know, signage is something that for the most part the borough can just, just do. So when the time actually comes to make any change to the parking, that will come before Borough Council.
I do also want to point out that the reason we're looking into this issue is because of frequent requests on behalf of Sabine Avenue residents. So we hear you and we're, we're working on this and we'll be happy to work with you to make the, the one-way street safer, one-way portion safer.
If I may, I just want to add maybe one more comment. Because I think, you know, in terms of solving any problem, you know, this, whatever solution we come up with, I don't necessarily intend to be like a be-all, end-all solution. I think the borough would want to monitor the effectiveness of a solution no matter where we deploy it. And if it's found to be inadequate, then continue to examine what, you know, the solutions, if any, are.
All right. Thanks, everyone. Next item is the consent agenda.
I move that Borough Council approve the consent agenda items that appear on the Agenda Items 8A through 8I.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda items, 8A through 8I, raise your hands? All right. Thank you, everyone. All right. Agenda Item 8 Prime A would be the presentation from the Norbert Community Food Bank.
I'm so distracted by the screen. You're all in front of me and I'm watching you on the screen like it's the Saturday. Do I sit? Do I stand? Tell me where you want us to be.
What would you prefer? I mean, the microphone's probably going to work better if you come closer, so if you're able to do that.
And I'm loading up the
I believe you.
And for the benefit, you give me one moment, for the benefit of everyone on Zoom, I'm going to share my screen so they can see the presentation as well. All right, uh, let's see here in the phone meeting. All right, I think you should be good to proceed here and just let me know whenever you need it.
That's five one.
That is, yeah.
Well, it's different than my order. That's okay. So there it is. Obviously, I'm sorry, John, do you want to There's 201 Sabine.
I'm sorry, can you maybe introduce yourself as a
I'm sorry, I apologize.
I think we know all you are.
Sorry, sorry. I'm Gigi Moffett. I live at 206 White Avenue and I run the Norbert Community Food Bank for 15 years now at 201 Sabine Avenue in what we call Big Brown. And Big Brown is the building and that is a shot of the entire property right there. Um, you can go to the next one. Thank you so much. Oh, so these are a little out of order from what we were planned on doing, so we're just going to
Just tell her which one you want.
It's okay. That's all right. We can go with it.
We can, we can put up the, I mean, just tell them how to do it, because it's going to make it work. It's only six slides. We only have six slides, right?
No, it's 12 slides. Uh-oh. We had a lot of touches. It's okay. So I will thrill you with some of the information that are on the other slides.
Sorry, Gigi, maybe if I could just hear one quick housekeeping item here. Um, so I see people still raising their hands on Zoom. You know, for those who are not familiar, Borough Council meetings, we have the opportunity for public comment during the public comment session. And generally, a public comment is not accepted outside of that time period. Um, so just, you know, I don't want anyone to misunderstand what we're doing here. So I see people raising their hands now.
Um, Amanda, if I may, um, they may be raising their hands because nothing's coming up on, no slide has come up yet on the screen sharing.
It's a good reason.
Thank you.
Can't live with it. Can't live without it, yeah. Uh, okay, yeah, for some reason your screen sharing is paused. Let's see here.
Meanwhile, do you have physical slides? Do you have printouts?
I do not. All I have is the fabulous app, 32-page application. So that's what this is. Um, so what I can tell you is Montgomery County has been gifted $161 million. That has to be set specifically for programs with the American Rescue Office, which they established. Those dollars have to be allocated on the books some Um, those dollars have to be allocated on the books somehow, um, programs or ideas, projects or ideas. And it is a large application, as I said, 32 pages. I'm not sure what's going on. But, and we know that this is out of order, like, right? So how usually council gets projects is that projects come in, they go through the planning commission, it's a property owner, they have sketches, they go through this whole process. We know that this is a little bit different because we are not funded to make the changes that we were going to propose to. So that comes out of that ARPA money. It is, it doesn't affect us. It, um, we would be able to, the funding would enable us to commit to making those sketches and full plans and permits and all that good stuff, should we be able to move forward. But there are a few things that I want to explain or reiterate or make a really big point of. That it's a grant. So Montgomery County Rescue Office has the authority to fund all of what we're asking, none of what we're asking, or some of what we're asking. So while you'll see lots of things that we're going to propose, it's up to them. That's how grants work. They're able to say that they are not interested in certain parts of it. And so I don't want anybody to think that we're, you know, making promises and it's all going to be funded because that funding has not been accounted for yet through the Rescue Office. So that's it. And of course, the second piece is, um, well, more than that, I suppose, is when you look at this, I guess we could start here. Sorry, this is Alex. Alex, come on up for a second. Alex Triscel, and she is designer builder that we were working with for the property. And she's going to explain some of the objectives, some of the ideas. We're missing some slides, but I think we can hammer through.
So I'm Alex Triscel. I actually live on Hampton Avenue. So I'm uniquely qualified in that I not only do construction, I am also a realtor. So I look at it from a real estate perspective. And very recently, within the last week and a half, I was kind of tickled by this idea that the very plans that we've all been looking at for 201 would come out of not Norberthians' pockets. And I think that's a big objective. And there's also a lot of goals that each of us want to see in the, the space itself. Not the least of which is green space and dealing with some of the things that are currently problematic of the property. The deferred maintenance has cost the building a lot of its integrity. And it's very plain to see from somebody who either has the experience or doesn't. Things as simple as windows to doors. The ADA requirements are by far not met, uh, on, on all accounts. And there's an inability, I think, for anyone to be misled that Norberth would be able to pay for all of those improvements without trying to advocate for just building a new building there. But since we have an opportunity to be going after the grant money that has been available to Montgomery County, it's unique. We can basically accomplish all of these things if the grant money is in fact awarded for our vision. The way to do that is to bring in some of the things that push us forward. The water mitigation problem, since there's standing water in some places, the eyesore that is the parking lot, the fact that things have been abandoned on that parking lot. I mean, I know that, uh, big vehicles, they're not ideal on our streets and yet just having them there, it looks very rundown. The park is this cute little corner in the front that gets hidden by Montgomery Avenue due to the height vary, uh, sorry, height variation from Montgomery Avenue. You, uh, see, if you're driving along, you don't see the park at all. And then we have a stairs to nowhere and signs to places that don't actually even exist within the campus anymore. So there's a lot of things that I think would be on the shortlist and.
Do you have another slide? So maybe it, it, we could speak to, because this is, is there another slide?
Yeah, there, there are six slides.
Okay, yeah, so that, that's actually my contribution to the war effort here.
So we don't know, right, ours did not obviously, uh, show up here. So what we currently do, you all know this, we serve Lower Marion and Norberth, right? And it's grocery pickup at the door and that's from 10 to 2. We do currently serve 150 households in this community, um, same one zip code. And, um, most of those are deliveries. So there's only about 30 households that come to the door currently and all the others are currently by delivery. That's 10 delivery teams, Mondays and Tuesdays. And right now, we took a dip outside of the pandemic and right now we are very close to being at that pandemic number again of 165 plus households. We're just under that threshold. So we do absolutely give folks prepared meals. Uh, and a lot of that is for seniors and people with disabilities. Uh, frozen food, shelf-stable food, meat, produce, personal care items, cleaning. And if you were in that line, you know that toilet paper was the number one thing and cleaning products was, was number two, long before people were asking for food during the emergency. And why, of course, right? Why, of course, are we here in this moment? We're here in this moment because we survey, we survey our guests all the time. But out of this larger survey that we did both during the pandemic and post-mortem making room and being involved with the Montgomery County, um, Anti-Hunger Network and having these really, it's supposed to be eight phone calls, eight meetings, it turned out to be 28. We learned so much about the community and what the services are that the community is looking for. So out of this vast survey, which took a lot, is that, um, we, we really know that in this community, we need two licensed full-time social workers. We need a law of clinics to address the civil cases that are happening that folks are not able to pay for. We're looking for, um, a community-based after-school program for elementary school kids that we are going to provide, we're partnering with, to create a business incubator. Um, it's actually, it starts out as a very small portion, but then there's check-ins over a couple of years to make sure those businesses are still sustainable and workable. Um, we would provide on the campus a center for prepared meals. That is a big piece because out of the pandemic, what we learned is there are a lot of folks, seniors who do not use the stove anymore and they're more comfortable with microwaves and they're not capable. There's barriers to traditional cooking. Also, we have community-based groups, um, organizations that we partner with that we, so, uh, Phil Abundance will often, uh, come to us and say, who in the community want after? What summer programs need food for their, uh, the students they're serving? And so we provide that. Screen share isn't working. I've just gotten two texts saying the screen share isn't working. Sorry.
Well, that's not, that's not what I've heard. I asked the mayor, she said it's working.
Andrea, are you?
Sorry about that.
Are you seeing the screen share right now?
Um, I see the first slide, unless you've changed roles.
No, we haven't.
We, we only have the, the one slide up at the moment, so, uh, sorry I didn't wrap your presentation.
Well, that's okay.
Technical issues.
That's okay.
Well, it sounds like we're not having to.
Yeah.
Right, so the, out of that, and again, the community asked for community advisors. So people to work and sit with them to go through the process of signing up for CHIPS, signing up for LIHEP. And now there's a new water program through the state to help with water bills. That is really what we're looking to expand on. So, uh, is there another slide you want to flip? Because then Alex can keep going.
Sure, let's see what we have here.
So, um, a lot of people, this is just basically listing what I started with, which was, um, the current use is the playground, which is in, in a lot of ways, the best part of the green space aspect of it. And I know that a lot of the local residents are looking to increase the green space. So that is part of the plan. Even though we're looking to repurpose the buildings themselves, the green space gets reimagined. It's, um, more inclusionary. It's not promoting ball fields because we have that right outside of our, uh, town hall here. Um, so it's looking at some of the other aspects that would be available to not only the, all the way young, but the more mature residents of Norberth as well. Um, in the entire campus and cause that is trying to be furthered with all of this is offering services to Norberth. So even though we're looking at, coming at it from not using Norberth dollars to accomplish this, it's strictly for services for the very residents that are here. Um, social services, possible rec hall for teens. Um, I have my own team that is in Lower Marion High School. And the, the comment that's always going around is if it's raining, where do we go? And it's things like that that, that we're missing. We don't have that available space. If it's not the library, they're oftentimes going to the park and they're hanging out and they're out in the rain. So how can we give them an opportunity and a platform to possibly take that and grow it in a way? And the pictures, if you don't mind, go to the next slide here. Do you mind going to the next slide and we'll come back to this? Perfect. So here are some basically food for thought ideas. The potential for the school building, which is the three-story building on, um, Essex, would be where, over the course of time and through the rehab, it would be available for a concept not terribly unlike WeWork. I don't know if anyone is familiar with that, but it is a, uh, a co-working space where you're able to rent smaller suites, tends to be glass, very, everybody's in the same place. But then you share things like conference rooms and the common areas. So for me, um, being a business owner right here in Norberth, I use my home address because quite frankly, my business is all about going to my customer. And I don't love using my home address because that's now using my home as an advertising for my business. So something like this where you have a suite that you can actually purchase into, I don't have to own an office. I don't have to own a storefront. And yet I can still have that collaborative mindset. So things like that would be a way of the property producing income to offset some of the expenses that it incurs down the road after the grant money has been used to update the building. You can see through the pictures, the, the ones on the bottom. Um, something as simple as a, a community, a whiteboard discussion area right there. It's the second, uh, picture in from, if you're looking at your computer, it would be the bottom left. Um, there has also been talk about trying to get the theater arts program in there and after-school programs and again, a possible rec space for teens. Those are all just concept ideas, but perfectly possible within the building footprints that currently exist.
We have, I'm sorry, we don't have any intention of expanding the footprint of the property, of the building, other than it is now. We feel that we could, we could absolutely go in and make changes and really produce something that's beneficial to everyone. And we're looking at using, so I know that, that we mentioned the, the running out of the funds at some point between three to five years, but we're looking at, um, operating under the CAM model. So that's a community-agreed management, so they pay into ostensibly an escrow account, that's where the money goes. So that over time, um, you build it once, it's brand new and beautiful, but like what happens, right? Five, 10 years from now, so that money would be held to, uh, obviously make repairs and the improvements, but it would also be able to provide us with, um, facilities, people onsite. So which this building and property unfortunately didn't have for a very long time. So it would, uh, it would allow us to fund some very necessary, um, hands-on folks for the property of 201.
If you don't mind going to the exterior shots, that'd be great. So, so the things that the building definitely needs, there is a courtyard in the interior space. Uh, not the part that you see as a pedestrian unless you sort of enter into the complex. But there is a courtyard that has doors that just really have no, no good way of telling you what's inside. So the audience were something that we'd be looking at adding, but only on the inside. You wouldn't see that from the curb. Definitely dealing with curb appeal. Again, some garden ideas that would be more for every generation. And, um, reaching out to the high schools and the elementary schools to get participation of the residents here in Norberth. We want to make sure that they're aware of the fact that this center is being redesigned with them in mind. And then, um, again, with the theater arts program and possibly a movie night here in Norberth. Something as simple as a green amphitheater outside is possible. There's a, again, um, a height difference between Montgomery Avenue and the top of the property. So trying to downsize the parking lot, um, macadam surface area and using things that are natural materials to deal with water issues and then possibly be offering some more outside spaces and things to do again for, for all of Norberth.
And you can see that Carol Marie, um, sent us the, um, the screenshot there of, of the ADA park that the community is asking for. So all we tried to do was include as many components of that previous, as Rosalie said, that, uh, was presented and that the community had come forward on a few other phone calls and, and public meetings. So we tried to include as many of those aspects as we could in this presentation. But as I said, we're not funded yet, so we don't have sketches and we don't have those things, unfortunately.
I, I don't mind wrapping up my part of this and then I'll, I'll let Gigi take over here.
Oh, yeah.
This literally was a culmination of not only seeing the building getting wrapped up in her enthusiasm because we really can be offering so much more to people that live right here in the Borough. Uh, and then on top of that, I took the time and I was reading through some of the, the survey responses and people that live locally, uh, within the Borough, very close. Anybody who felt the desire to actually put, put some two cents in and have something to say. All of those things were considered in trying to make this plan work for everyone. And the fact that Norberth would not be funding it, essentially, money would be coming from elsewhere. There's no reason why we can't meet all of the needs and not have something as simple as this costs too much or we need to be looking at it differently because we're talking about taxpayer dollars. This is not a cost that would be put on, on the members of Norberth.
I do want to say that there's a screen, yeah, obviously we are missing some screens. But, uh, one of them says that, you know, our intention is to purchase a property to have a permanent home. And you know that we've been leasing from, uh, from you, uh, the Borough, at 201 for a number of years, at least seven years now. And part of this income, uh, part of the, I'm sorry, part of this grant money would be to buy a permanent space. So we know that at points you had said, all said publicly, that was not going to be an option. Um, but that is our intent, is to find a permanent home so that would lift the burden of mortgages, lift the burden of leasing. And, uh, so that would be part of what, what we're here to ask, is whether the building is for sale or not, and that's your decision. And, but you, everybody should know, everybody should know that our intention is to find that property, if not here, to find it and go somewhere else and create that permanent home for ourselves through a commercial property, either in Lower Marion, uh, probably Lower Marion. But, but purely for square footage. Not, not that we want to leave Norberth, we don't. But purely from a square footage, uh, perspective and what we really want to do and our intentions of providing, um, a lot more services, we would need a bigger space, the space we have. Thank you very much. I'll give you a need a phone back. Are there any questions we can answer? Yeah, go immediately.
I'm ready to answer any questions.
We'll send all of you the presentation, the full presentation, so you understand what we're looking at.
Yeah, let's, let's ask kind of questions, because you're members of council. Barbara, do you?
I have two. One is, you said you have, you're working on the grant?
Yeah.
Proposal?
Yes.
Will you be sending that to us so we can take a look at it?
Uh, so did I have to send it to you? Absolutely.
Okay, because, I mean, I think that's going to be something we'd want to consider when we're looking at this.
Of course.
And then, uh, I realize you won't know how much money you're going to get.
We don't know.
So what are you going to do if you don't get the full amount that you need to do what you want to do? Uh, you know, you're saying you're not going to use any taxpayer dollars, but what if the, what if the grant is only a quarter of what you want? What happens then?
Right, so obviously that would be scaled back to what you just saw on the property. Or we would find another location where we would be able to fund. And there are other grants available out of the world for capital, uh, projects and to purchase property. So that is part of what, what we consider as well.
Okay, let's, let's hold on a second, because we're having a technical issue. All right, we're back. You have another question? So I guess I'll, I'll skip it then, if anybody else has questions. Ira?
Yeah. So, um, I, I don't know much about this program. Does this program, I guess, does it require that the Borough, like, write a letter of support for it?
Sure, we would encourage you, if you wanted to go forward with what we're asking, we would absolutely welcome a letter of support.
No, but it doesn't.
It does not require.
That's the other question.
But, but then this would, we would be submitting, understand that if you don't support what we're talking about at 201, that our submission would not include 201, it would include another property.
Oh, I see, so you.
This is ground zero of the discussion.
So you would, in order to submit for 201?
For 201, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, just.
No, 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 good question.
And just to clarify, the timing of this grant, so the, the deadline is the end of April. So that's why this is, uh, this is kind of a timeframe issue. Um, so, you know, my understanding is that, you know, you need the Borough's support to go through with this grant application.
At 201, yes.
If you're, you know, if the Borough does not support your grant application, you're going to put it in for another site.
Yes.
That's the, you understand that?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
I just want to make an observation. The Borough, the Borough Council's already said that we're, you know, we're committed to one of, uh, three of several options. But one was to maximize the parks and open space. The second was to entertain proposals from community organizations. And third was, um, to entertain a, a specific, to keep the local childcare and.
Sure.
keep the local childcare and expand the parks and open space. So it seems to me that the council's already given tacit requests for proposal from the community organization, and that in and of itself is support for this type of proposal, so I don't know that we need to do anything further, we've already asked for this specific kind of proposal.
Well, we would need to submit a letter alongside the grant application.
Okay, sure, but I mean, but I don't think there's not, I don't think there's another decision for the council to make. We've already said we were interested in entertaining...
Actually, I think what we're absolutely interested in entertaining proposals was we didn't express an interest in selling the property.
Exactly.
That's a different, that's a different type of person to talk to.
Okay, so that wasn't clear to me, that that's what this proposal was, was actually purchase the property.
That is...
No, I think, I thought we had already decided that that was not an option.
Right, that's correct, so that's...
So I think we should be clear about that, because I think we've already discussed that, and we were determined as a council to not sell the property, so I think we should say that.
I think our communities may, they don't want us to sell the property.
Yes, that's my, that's, I have clarity about that, too, that the council and the community have been really clear that we don't want to sell the property, so I know that we could support that idea. We could possibly support the idea of like a triple net lease, perhaps.
So we understand, like, we've been leasing from the borough for quite some time, and the dollars, obviously, you over time have asked us for increases, and we have come back and forth and negotiated with those dollars and increases as best we could, but we're funded by grants and community members, and so we're not always able to pass that direct cost on to community members for services, and it makes it challenging for us. And then, of course, we don't know, if you would, we could say, yes, we'll sign another lease, and yes, we accept the increase, but ultimately, we don't have a permanent home, so we don't have anywhere to go. And so while we would prefer to say it 201, we understand where you are, and we need you to understand where we are, that it is not an option for us to continue leasing, to keep the money out of the pandemic, the money that, when we think about what could have been done with the dollars to assist our community members, that's really what has weight heavy on us, that we have an opportunity to do.
But it was just more of like a yes/no question, are you proposing to buy the property?
Yes, I am, yes. We would, in the submission, we are proposing to buy the property, in the submission, yes.
And you are intending, if you purchase the property, to become landlords as well with some of the other uses of it?
Well, it is the CAM model. Yeah, it's actually, you, we would form a larger board that makes the decisions about the campus with our partners in that space.
And who would the partners be?
I can't tell you that at this time. Sorry about that. But it does include childcare, it does include all those, it would include the community kitchen piece, it includes all of those, but we can't tell you who they are in this moment because, if you, so in this grant, Barbara, sorry to say, that it says it can't, it's information that can't, have already been presented in public. So we do know that some communities have tried to use the dollars for projects that were already released to the public. And a lot of our agreements hinge on the fact that until we secure a property, right, there would be no reason for us to, want to bring services here without a permanent home. So a lot of those agreements hinge on the fact that we have to find a space for partners to be.
That puts us in a very difficult position, because we're having to make a blind decision, so I think you have to appreciate that as well.
I do.
Certainly, I think the main goal of tonight for Gigi, certainly before this gets submitted, is if it's a clear-cut, Norbert is closing the door on a potential sale of the property, it doesn't make financial sense for this submission, because those are dollars that are coming in, and they don't have the singular goal of furthering not only the community aspect of it, but also that of the food bank, that it really, there was a sort of byline in all of it that said Norbert was not interested in selling, and I do understand that, and it does prevent the development aspect of it, that I, to be honest, living here, I don't want development there either, I don't want another apartment building, I don't want to lose the green space, I certainly don't want to lose the park. It means a lot that we still have one small space in the corner, I think we can improve it in a lot of ways, and I think we can provide those services back to Norbert, but if that doesn't actually help or change the shut door to no way to sell, then the dollars that are coming from an alternate source, they're not coming from Norbert. So it's not Norbert trying to make money on, the income is somewhere close to $270,000 there a year in rent, and you're talking about the deferred maintenance that, at this point, it was quoted at around $3.4 million, and I can tell you from the contractor aspect, we're talking about now almost three times that, just to do that deferred maintenance. So when you're talking about the alternatives, as far as Norbert being able to afford it, if you're not willing to go in a direction where somebody else would be paying for those very services that we'd be providing to, and by we, I apologize, I keep losing myself in here.
The royal lady.
Yeah. I just believe in the mission, and the mission is to serve Norbert and the community and provide services that just don't exist. They don't exist until you get all the way back to Philly, or you get all the way up to Narsetown, and we are kind of smacked out in the middle. And so I guess the sort of goal of all of this is, would you entertain the idea of selling if the goal was still to maintain very ideas that Norbert wants to have there?
Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
What are you proposing to buy, what's your offer? What's the price?
Well, we didn't get that far, but if you could see your way, you know, I think so...
Usually, people want to know before they decide to sell something, at a minute.
Sure, so I think, you know, when we had this conversation, and I spoke with Fred very briefly about it, we're looking at $3 million for the property because of all the work that had to be done and the risk that we were taking in, you know, opening up that can of worms to refitting the property.
So does, does your plan really require that you need to own the building, or do you need a permanent home? I mean, if you were to make an arrangement so that the food bank...
Sorry, I have like a point of no information. So I, you know, sorry to put, you know, the spot here's on, so, I mean, just reading Borough Code, because recently I was having to read the section, a few months back when we were selling Public Works Truck, I had to look at like the procedures in Borough Code for selling borough property. Looking at Borough Code, if we were to sell a piece of borough-owned property, my understanding is that we can't just pick someone to sell it to, right? Don't we have to do an actual, like, bid process?
There are a number of other public entity-type exceptions, but generally, yes, you would do a public bidding to make sure that you're bidding the best price.
Actually, to... Sure, no, no, we do, right, we're aware of that, but if you can come up with another way to give us a permanent home, we'd be more than willing to sit down and have that conversation as well.
I mean, I, again, I don't know if this could legally work, but if you were to put this together and get the grant, I mean, perhaps the food bank could live in that building.
I guess...
I mean, that's my opinion.
Well, then, and there's other ways to do it, like a 99-year lease or sort of a land lease.
Yeah, I mean, I think that the borough wants to protect the property, we want to be in control of that property just to make sure it stays a public amenity, you know, we don't want to lose control potentially to development. We want it to be on our terms, on the borough's terms, and that's why, you know, there was a concern about selling rather than leasing, leasing would allow the borough to protect, you know, control the terms, so...
And certainly, currently, I mean, we've been having shorter-term leases.
Yes, absolutely.
You know, with changes of rent, but I'd imagine it would be a longer-term lease, you wouldn't have to worry about, anyway, shorter-term.
Right.
So if you give, if you give the food bank, the, of the three buildings in the very tentative design, it's the one closest to the parking lot, would be all-inclusive for the food bank and the one in the front, so if, let's say you leave a lifetime lease there, the one faces most face on Seblin Avenue, I don't know if you want to pull up that original slide in mine?
We don't want to.
It's a little...
It's fine, it's fine.
But if, if the money's being sought from the grant program, and Norbert keeps control of the building, and Norbert keeps the income-reducing side under control on that side, then is the lifetime lease the only advantage to the food bank? That's the one going after the grant money. Are you going to improve, are we going to improve as Norbert, the rest of it, the part that needs improving, that's the part that's been constantly on the slide down, or are you going to be at some point in the need of tearing it down because it continues to deteriorate?
Right, I mean, we all know the deferred maintenance and the condition of that property at this point, and it's probably...
We've already decided to move buildings, that's, yeah, we're right about that.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, we've decided that we can't afford it, I think that was the, that we cannot afford to...
We decided that we were removing the buildings.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I understood, that we decided, we had reasons that did a reuse of those buildings, because they're just, it's not...
It didn't make financial sense for us to do it.
And they're in the way of creating a larger park. So we want a bigger...
So this is a real estate issue, you are allowed to have your discussion, we have made our presentation, thank you for your time, you know where to find us, we appreciate it, and we won't take up any more of your time.
May I ask a really quick question before I sit down?
Oh, I have one thing, sorry.
Go ahead.
No, you go.
So if Norbert's not selling, and it's invited the opportunity for redevelopment ideas, what's left?
Leasing?
Leasing just the property?
All kinds of things are left.
Lots of things are left, yeah.
But just leasing, and then you can build whatever you want there?
Yep.
Well, no, I mean, we...
Not whatever, but...
The borough would have terms for it to be built there, and the community's been very clear that they're not looking for intensive commercial use of that space for them.
And we've never talked about that anyway, so that's not, you know, been a council consideration, so...
So, as a resident, and I'll just take my quick public comments, sorry Samantha, that I live on Wayne Avenue, and on my front porch, I look at that building every day, and so I do have a sign, you've passed my house, right, that we have, I have a sign in my yard for my neighbors that say, "Make it a park quarter to quarter," so my best advice, if you do not take what we're offering, my advice, too, is to make it a park quarter to quarter, 110%, make it a park, 3.7 acre park, and just move on. Thank you.
All right, so I believe on executive Rebecca.
You have Rebecca, or she?
Yeah, she's in person.
Hello.
I will come over here, I do not have a presentation. I'm Rebecca Swanson, I'm the executive director of the Montgomery County Redevelopment Authority. I just want to back off and give a quick explanation of what the redevelopment authority is, and maybe some misconceptions that I think are going around about what we do. We are quasi-governmental agency, we are part of the county, we have no funding through the county, what we do is assist all 62 municipalities, nonprofits, developers, property owners, with economic and community development projects. So one big thing that we do is help with grants and loans for projects. Separately, I can jump touch on this at the end, I am part of the recovery office that will be, I'm on the guidance team for these recovery folks, so I'd love to give a little bit of advice on that end, to both the borough and to anyone who's applying, but the RDA, we have a whole, the majority of what we do is help find state, local, and federal funding for redevelopment projects. This would be, and we've got money for property owners, for nonprofits, for municipalities across the board, so we're here to help with that. We also get brought in when there are situations like this, where there is a property that a municipality would like to be redeveloped, and, but wants control of that process. Typically, where we're brought in is when a municipality takes control of property. A municipality wants to develop that property, they have a fiduciary responsibility, because you have to sell to the highest bidder. If that's a wallow button to put in the gas station, you're getting a wallow gas station. As the RDA, we don't have that fiduciary responsibility. We are allowed under the urban redevelopment, the state urban redevelopment law, we sell it to what the borough municipality wants. We draft the RFP, we take control of property, we draft the RFP, we work to what the municipality wants. We've done this in Norbert, there are three of them in Narsetown right now, and then we work with them through the process, they pick it, the redevelopment authority has no control, we do not say what goes there, it's all the municipality. We then sell it to the developer. That's how our tip process typically works. Obviously, in this case, you guys don't have any interest in being, selling the property to the developer, so if you're just leasing it, you actually don't need the RDA, because we're only there to allow you to sell it to the highest, the best use, as opposed to highest bidder. But as the RDA, your choice is to redevelop and do a grant, not a lease or a grant lease or subdivide, you do different things, we are here to support, like every other municipality, whatever the municipality wants, whatever Norbert wants, the RDA can find whatever way we can to help, whether it's helping the borough get a grant, I don't know if there's any environmental help that building is, guessing, there might be some environmental issues in there, we can assist, we have an EPA assessment grant and revolving loan fund for environmental remediation, so we have lots of options that we can help facilitate funding, whether it is the borough doing it, whether it's the person that the borough was leasing to, whether it's a developer, if it's a, if it's going to be a building that is going to the economic development, we're happy to help, we have also helped with parks, from the environmental remediation standpoint. So, yeah, so that's what the RDA can do, that's why we're here, I want to clear up, we're not, I'm not coming in here and saying, "We're doing this," I know the RFP went out, and that was an example of the RFP that we put out on behalf of Narsetown for development there, and that's what the RDA does. I wrote that RFP, but Narsetown was telling me, "This is what you put in the RFP, this is very specifically what we want," so that, so we can clear up any misconceptions, I wasn't, the RDA was not saying, "Put a seven-story apartment building with ground floor commercial in there." And then for the recovery office, and I don't, I don't know if the boroughs are planning, wanting to apply for any ARPA funds.
Thank you.
That is a very, you know, get your applications in by the 30th, the decisions are likely to be made by, the goal is to have the decision made by July 1, because that money has to be spent, fully spent, in three and a half years, so that's. Does anybody have any questions? Is there any other information I can provide that would be helpful?
Just a quick clarification, we talk about RFPs, I know that's a sensitive subject for the community, so the only RFP that has gone out is the RFP asking for assistance to write the development RFP as part of option four, that was previously shared with the public and borough council, and that's why the RDA is here tonight.
Yes, sorry.
Their letter in the packet here that had, people on Zoom, I mean, there's, people on Zoom can see in the packet, this letter right here was in response to, was in response to that request. There are no RFPs has gone out for actual development on this project, and again, that's why Rebecca is here to talk to council tonight.
We responded to the RFP for an RFP. Just in really informational way to say, the RDA is here, we're here to help, we love to support all of our municipalities, I don't know if we've done anything in Norbert before, obviously, one of your previous council members is on my board, Bob Whitewright, so that's really how, we wanted just to make sure that everyone knows we exist, we're here to help, we can help with, no matter who is going to own the property, build whatever's going to be here, we will do whatever we can to see, bring up any grant or loan money to make whatever the borough wants happen. Any questions? Well, thank you for having me, I appreciate it. Samantha, I think you have my contact information, if anybody has any questions, Michelle, I think you probably have it too from when we met before.
I've got it, I agree.
Feel free to reach out if you guys have any follow-up questions, if anybody has any questions about the ARPA recovery fund application, I'm happy to help with that. If you're applying for anything, make sure, the biggest thing, explain why, what you are doing, what your project, what it is, how it is related to the impact of the pandemic, that is the number one thing that the scores will be held at, to make sure that it is responsive to the effects of COVID. If there's no other questions, thank you for having me, and feel free to reach out.
Thank you.
Samantha, feel free to share my email.
Great, golden.
Okay. Thank you. Let's move to action item 9A, saving use.
Okay. I move that borough council adopt ordinance number 1043 for accessory dwellings.
Give her a second.
Second.
Discussion, let's start with both.
Since this is a zoning ordinance, I think it would be proper that we have an advertised hearing for this, so...
Thank you, it's my first time doing, they keep running a hearing, so walk me through it.
So it being a hearing, we will commence with that hearing, I just have a couple exhibits for the record that are required when there is a zoning ordinance amendment, and there are a little bit more for this situation, because as you recall, this was originally advertised, we decided to make a change, and then it was re-advertised.
Okay, come on, can we close the door? Remember the Republicans' left.
Maybe even shut the door.
Maybe, Ira, maybe even shut the one behind you.
I think I can too. Oh, but then they can get in, but.
No, they can get in down there, they can get in down there.
No, no, it's locked enough, it's like a whole new thing.
Can't they get in down there?
No, we haven't set the timer up yet.
All right, well, we'll make it apparent, okay, sorry to interrupt you right now.
And this has been more for establishing a record for purposes of meeting minutes in case someone was to contest and say, "You did not follow this, therefore ordinance is not valid." Just a number of exhibits just to make sure. For exhibit one would be the ordinance, that's up for today's consideration. For exhibit two, was the prior notice of the hearing that was originally scheduled for March 17. And the, that notice being in the Main Line Times, two times as required under the NPC on February 27 and March 6 of 2022. At that hearing, there is a decide, a decision to have it go back for a change to get reviewed to the Planning Commissions. But there was an original submission and review by the Narberth Planning Commission on February 7, and a review by the Montgomery County Planning Commission, which was submitted on March 4 of 2022. So those are the original ordinances, and as you recall, there was some change in terminology that was recommended by the Montgomery County Planning Commission, agreed to by the Narberth Planning Commission. We made those changes, and as a result, it was re-advertised for tonight. And that notice of advertisement of the amended ordinance was in the Main Line Times on April 3 of 2022. And it was resubmitted to Narberth Planning Commission and reviewed on March 7, 2022, and submitted to the Montgomery County Planning Commission on March 18, 2022. No additional changes were recommended, thankfully, which would be expected. And that amended ordinance was also submitted to the Montgomery County Law Library and was marked as admitted on March 28, 2022. So all of the requirements needed for a zoning ordinance amendment have now been put in place. I don't know if there's any questions additionally about this ordinance. We did discuss it at the time that it was originally motioned to be advertised. There was some changes that were recommended for terminology to make it more clear as to the areas that were required, building footprints, building coverage, terminology. Those were corrected per recommendation of the Planning Commission. There was an additional change related to clarifying the identification of dwelling units for public safety purposes, that was put in as well. So now this ordinance is compliant with both the recommendations of the County Planning Commission and the Narberth Planning Commission.
Okay, if we're in, are we in a public hearing, do we need public comment?
You should have public comment on this ordinance, if anyone specifically would like to comment on this ordinance.
All right, so public comment is now open specifically for ordinance 1043 for ADUs. So if anybody online, on Zoom, has a comment pertaining to this particular ordinance, please raise your hand. And Samantha will. Bye.
I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, seeing nothing. So did we have a discussion and public comment, or in the hearing, or we go back to the motion?
Technically, you would go back into the public, the meeting to do that vote.
All right.
So you'd re adjourn, you'd adjourn the hearing into the meeting.
Okay.
For purposes of doing that vote. You could have discussion at this time, but if you're going to see none, I mean.
Yeah, let's adjourn the hearing.
Okay, so this adjourn, this hearing would then be closed, now we're back to the public meeting. And this ordinance is now in position to be voted upon by our council.
Okay, so the motion's already on the floor, it's been seconded, so discussion of the ordinance.
Do I just, I just unfold this, but I just want to, I just want to double check that. I'm assuming the hearing was advertised, even though it wasn't on the agenda as a hearing?
Correct, it was noted as that there was a hearing and that council may take action to vote at the public meeting. Exactly what we're hearing.
I'm for this.
Okay.
I don't think they need to add any more than we already discussed it, you know, it's answered.
Okay, seeing one and odds, seeing nothing from the mayor. All right. We're going to be voting on approval ordinance 1043 for accessory dwelling units. All those further in favor? All right, motion passes. 9B.
I move that Borough Council adopt ordinance 1044 to increase volunteer first responder tax credit 20% to 100%.
Second.
Okay.
And again, for the record, this ordinance also was advertised on April 3, 2022, second on the Main Line Times, so the public would know that this would be before council this evening. It was also submitted to the Montgomery County Law Library on March 28, 2022, and has been on the website in the middle of the conversation.
Okay, but we're not in a hearing for this one, because that was already changed.
It is less necessary, correct?
All right. Any discussion or comments about voluntary tax credit?
When this, when this idea of the first responder tax credit was initiated like three or four councils ago, at that time, I thought, I thought we had voted on offering 100% tax credits. I'm glad that we're finally making good on what I thought I voted for then.
And in defense of those who came before us, at the time that council initially adopted this ordinance, state law capped the tax credit at 20%.
Okay, so we were given as much as we could.
Yeah, and only, and state law was only recently changed to allow.
Thank you, thank you, maybe that's best.
This is the third, this is the third amendment of this ordinance. The first was the enactment, the second one was made reciprocity with Lower Marion Fire Department thing with us. And this simply raises it up to 20%, keeping their reciprocity.
Because I remember some fairly large checks, thinking, "Oh, that's about 100% of the tax bill," but it must have been some back years, it was the reciprocity of the back years of catch up, yeah.
And we are once again following Lower Marion, which a few months ago raised it to 100%. So we're going to be in line with, this is very helpful for people who are in one municipality and volunteering in the other, which is pretty common.
Yeah.
Anyone else, Barbara, do you have a comment? Okay. The motion is to increase the volunteer first responder tax credit from 20% to 100%. All those in favor? Okay. 9C.
I move that Borough Council adopt resolution 2022-1 for TCBI planning grant for borough-wide multimodal transportation planning.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay. Discussion, Samantha?
Sure, so as has been discussed with council committee, as well as briefly with council last month, myself and the Borough Traffic Engineer and Borough Engineer have been working on a transportation and community design initiative grant offered through the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, just so everyone knows all the acronyms we're talking about here. It's a grant program that funds transportation planning, 100% up to $100,000. When we originally envisioned this grant, we had discussed a scope of work that would be about $150,000. And when we spoke with the Montgomery County Planning Commission, as required by the grant application procedure, they advised us to scale the project down to 100,000. And then, you know, if there's additional work the borough want to do beyond that to do so. So myself and the Traffic Engineer and Borough Engineer got feedback from members of council through council committee about what the most important aspects of the project were, and scaled it accordingly. So this draft grant application before you, that needs to be tightened up a little bit before we submit, but I think it's largely the concept of what we want to apply for. Would apply for this grant for $100,000 with no match required from the borough in order to move forward with transportation planning that accomplishes a lot of our goals outlined in our comprehensive plan. It helps us identify traffic circulation, it's going to help us identify specifically what sort of improvements we would need to make to encourage pedestrian safety, to encourage bicycle safety, other multimodal transportation uses. So I would certainly recommend in favor of us applying, given, A, there's no match required, and B, this opportunity would just solve so many issues for the borough that we've been trying to address for our residents.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, so we're moving on approving resolution for TC, for the TCBI planning grant. All those in favor? Okay. Just checking, all right, motion passes. 9D. This is very true.
I move that Borough Council approve our placement bids for a feedback and boiler replacement.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, I got her barber first. Discussion. Samantha, go on.
All right, thank you, Council President. So as council previously discussed, the borough's HVAC system is in a state where it negatively impacts borough operations, as well as those of public entities wishing to make use of the space here. So, you know, there was some discussion of council about the boiler, which we'll come to in just a second. But I did find out from the Borough Engineer that our options for the boiler are separate from the air conditioning. So if we wanted to go and move forward with the air conditioning, we could do that while we continue to kind of, if we need to continue to figure out the boiler, which we'll hit, so we'll come to in just a second. Replacing the HVAC would only make it functional, but would reduce our energy consumption from the HVAC system, per the draft energy audit that our engineer has worked on. We have budget for this as part of the million or so dollars we borrowed for building improvements. We also have two grant applications outstanding to help support any particular costs from this. So I would like, if council's okay, I think that's kind of my thoughts on the air conditioner, and I feel like we're probably pretty settled on that. But I'm happy to take any questions, and then I'm welcome to talk a little more in detail about the situation with the boiler.
All right, any comments on the air conditioning in particular?
All right, so. I was just going to say, I think the air conditioning is electric, so we're not, the issue, one of the issues we have with the boiler is that it's gas-fired, but the AC is all electric, so it really doesn't have that issue. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't crazy, yeah.
That's correct.
Okay, so let's move on to boiler.
Sure, so council had a concern, very understandably so, with the boiler. It is currently powered via natural gas, and given the borough's efforts to move towards sustainable energy as part of our climate action plan, I mean, we have the banner out at Havford Avenue right now about, you know, people switching to renewable electric, and our capital, capital, our climate action plan calls for residential commercial properties to adopt heat pumps and other sorts of heating solutions that are more energy efficient and aren't reliant on fossil fuels. So in that regard, the Borough Engineer took a look at the various options for the boiler, two of which would involve natural gas, and the other two that would be electric. Not only did the Borough Engineer look at the capital cost of installation, but also looked at over the life of the equipment, what sort of operational and maintenance costs there would be to kind of get a whole list of picture of what we're trying to do here. The one thing that we did not have, or at least borough staff didn't have an opportunity to do yet, was apply carbon shadow pricing, as council has recommended that we do in these situations, to get the full picture of the cost comparison between the non-renewable and renewable energy options. I will say, without the carbon pricing, which could end up, I'm not sure if it'll make a difference or not, without that, the electric options, even with factory and operation and maintenance over, it's like, are substantially more expensive than the not, than the non-renewable options. Now, it could be that council would still want to move forward with those more expensive options, but I just want to make sure you're aware of that, and just aware of that, that I think, not to put our council president on the spot, but I think he may have made some efforts to his credit, which I'm grateful for, to apply carbon shadow pricing to it. But I guess I welcome some additional feedback from council, and then if you want, we can take a closer look at the numbers as well.
Yeah, I'm happy to, I mean, I, I looked at the numbers and I, I found, I had some issues with some of the ways they calculated it. I thought they were a little, the costs of the electric were a little inflated compared to the natural gas, compared to what I was finding online in discussions. But even when I applied what I think are some proper corrections, the electric costs are still much, much higher than the, than the gas. And even if we assume that the electric is 100% renewable and the natural gas is just regular natural gas, the carbon emissions don't account for the cost differential. So I believe that a heat pump will have lower running costs than the natural gas once you work in the carbon cost, but the upfront cost of the heat pump that they gave us, you see the numbers, it's, it's three times as expensive. So we never, it takes, I think it takes like 200 years to recoup it. I mean, basically, if we got a lot, if it cost a third as much, then it would be, it would be appropriate to go with the heat pump. If we got grant funding and were able to pay 90,000, then it's worth a lot. But otherwise, given those prices, I think there's, there's no way we can justify going with a heat pump, unfortunately. But I would be happy to let the EAC look at these numbers and see if they, you know, if they concur, because this is just what I'm doing in my spare time, so.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't feel 100% confident, or even 85% confident by now.
Yeah, one, one point of confusion for me is, you know, the heat pump normally does air conditioning and heat, this both. So I'm not, that's what we do in our house, our house is completely electric. We don't use any natural gas at all, and it's a pretty easy conversion for a household in Narberth to make. And so when we separate out the air conditioning, you know, we're kind of, it, it's hard to make these calculations. What I would rather see us do is think about the cost of the new air conditioning system, you know, together with the cost of the new heating system, because a heat pump does provide both.
But one of the things, I'm sorry.
No, what?
One of the things that they pointed out in here is that the technology for heat pumps in a commercial building are just not where they need to be right now.
Yeah, that could be.
And so my question, because one of the things that they suggested, i- if we wanted to think about down the road doing a heat pump, they were saying, you know, you might want to, as a preventative step, start looking for reused, you know, reused, repurposed boilers so that you could, you know, have better. And so my question, before we make any decision, is what's the lifespan of each of these options? Because I, like, if, if the standard boiler is, is going to wear out really quickly, and we think that by the time it wears out, there's going to be really great commercial heat pumps, then I'm like, well, then maybe that's what we do, and maybe we switch it to renewable natural gas. Granted, it's still not as great as being renewable electric, but it's a start. So anyway, I, I just felt like I needed a little more information.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like their, their next steps, I thought that their ideas were really thoughtful and really smart advice, because in fact, like, if we started to look, if we said, "Okay, you're not ready to do that now." And I agree with you, Fred, it doesn't make sense. We can start planning for it, we can upgrade the electrical, consider, you know, integrating solar into that.
Yes, that's, yeah, that too.
For that down the road, I think that's really smart. I don't know, 40, they, they reck, they estimated a maximum 46 kilowatts to be generated from our roof. I don't know what kind, how much of a present contribution that would make to the HVAC in this building. It'd be interesting to know that. But I mean, I think looking into doing that preparation, and then, yeah, I think it's also really smart to think, okay, start thinking about, maybe you could swap in a used gas boiler if you wind up in a pinch. That will have a shorter lifespan, it will be, it's like committed for 30 years.
Exactly, that's where I was like, I.
More rapidly in the direction we want to go.
Yeah.
So I like the way that they thought through those options, I think, I mean, it makes sense.
Down the road, if we get to 2035, I guess is the year, 2030, and we still have, and we still have carbon, we can buy, we can buy offsets probably, I mean, we should find out how much the offsets would cost us. Do we know something about that already?
I will mention, I mean, this, this is something Elma and I still don't fully understand, so I'm going to, Rob, if you have additional information on this, but the borough does purchase, sounds like an oxymoron, renewable natural gas. And I'm not entirely sure how that works.
They might, they might be buying offsets, and, but they're.
It's methane from landfill, although it's not coming directly from us, so we're just paying into a market to support that.
I forgot, we did switch to that, didn't we?
Yeah, but, you know, there's still, there's still leaking, you know, that's, that's, you know, been documented with heat maps all around the country, leaving with methane. So methane is actually more warming than the air, yes.
And if we do have 46K of solar that we're producing ourselves, we could keep those. And if we do have 46K of solar that we're producing ourselves, we could keep those carbon offsets. So we would be producing our own. It might actually count, pay for the, the gas.
I guess.
So that's, that's the other way. I mean, rather than mark, rather than sell them, they would humiliate.
I guess the option I would throw out there, to stick with the policy Council adopted regarding carbon shadow pricing, is if the EAC could tell us, you know, and I appreciate the work that Council President's done on this already, if EAC could tell us, like, between each of these options, this is solely the cost differential due to the carbon shadow pricing, then maybe Council could make a commitment to, all right, you know, we'll get one of these other options and then just for the price differential due to carbon shadow pricing, be like, we'll make an investment into, you know, the climate action plan implementation and that amount of money to offset it.
I, I would, I would support that. I mean, we've, we've been talking about with the manager developing Green Fund in the next budget cycle that could be implemented in the next calendar year. And, you know, so we could be in a position with the help of the EAC to basically contribute funds to the Green Fund to offset the carbon, you know, that's involved in this decision.
So if I may, and I, I'm sorry if I'm disrupting the discussion by Council. Maybe my recommendation to Council would be to amend the motion on the table or, or to get rid of this motion and just make a completely new one, where we would move forward with the suggestions that I heard our Vice President make of where we would go ahead and advertise the HVAC. We would go ahead and move forward and looking to install the solar panel on the roof. And we would go ahead and to looking into getting a backup boiler. And then maybe a second motion to request that the EAC tell us what the, specifically what the carbon shadow pricing options are, or differential is on each of these options.
So remind me the need for the backup boiler?
Uh, just in case this one suddenly goes kaput and we need another one. But that way, we're not committing a bunch of money long-term to another gas one if we don't, if we decide we don't want to go that route. If technology changes in the next couple of years or something like that. Because it's not kaput right now. This isn't like the library where it was like they were freezing, you know.
Just, just by the way, if there's, there's some, there's a really good boiler in the basin of 201 Savoy Avenue. It's very, very new.
No.
No, I mean, it's very good equipment.
Ah.
That Oliver put in. Only a few years ago and hasn't lived a long life.
Maybe we should swap.
And it's, and it's on-demand hot water, it's on-demand gas hot water system. Yeah. Really efficient.
I mean, Panoni should know that boiler. They've definitely.
They may be diagnostic, but they may not, they may not have connected the, the dots. So I don't know.
I think we should.
Could we also ask them to give us lifespan of these, the different boiler options? Just so we have a sense of that too?
When I looked at, they were about identical, but.
Really?
15, 15 years, but Panoni, we should ask the experts.
And Samantha, you mentioned several things that we might do at this point. Would one of them also include looking into an electrical service upgrade for the building?
So that, that's already included, sorry to clarify that. That's already included in the money that Council authorized the borrowing for. Because it was identified in the KCBA.
Okay.
Okay. So any other questions for Samantha?
This one, not just, not just like the general improvements, but the upgrade that would be needed to, to additional power for the electric boiler. I think.
I'll check with Panoni that what KCBA recommended is in line with what they're recommending. I'll, I'll confirm that and find out. And they might, the answer might be no.
Yeah.
Because you know what they say about the word assume?
They're talking about deeper damage service, which I don't think KCBA was anticipating. So it's probably a different upgrade.
I mean, I love more than that.
I'm not really worried about not putting the air conditioning out for bid. I think we want to have this building air conditioning possible. So I don't want this, but I don't want this to get in the way, is what I'm saying. We're waiting on Panoni's.
I think, I think the energy damage service would be for the electric.
Yes. That would be, yeah, that's what that's for.
I think we don't want to upgrade for the HVAC. We can just do that.
All right. So your proposal is to look into that later, not to do that as the initial.
No, I think we should move forward, I think we should.
I think it's necessary.
I would literally follow Panoni's next steps on this page pretty much.
Me too.
To, to the dot. I think you're spot on.
It was, yeah. I was like, ooh.
So maybe then to make the motion, so adopt the recommendations.
Let's table the motion that's on the table.
Yep.
Okay. I need someone to make a motion in second tier, on the table.
I move that we table the motion to advertise bids for HVAC replacement.
Okay. I think we can just immediately vote on motion table. So all those in favor of tabling motion 9D? Okay. Now, do you want to, okay, is that, Samantha, does the memo or the next steps by Panoni fit in with what you were suggesting?
I said, I'm not sharing my screen on Zoom, just, just because that is very annoying for computer stuff. But anyone who wants to see the packet online, it's welcome to take a look at it. Here on the last page of the Panoni memo, there's these five action steps that I believe we discussed that we want to move forward with.
Yeah, so we should, we should probably summarize these since there's people watching.
So action step one is proceeding with the HVAC, HVAC upgrade as presently documented. Step two is to explore the electrical service upgrade to prepare us for electric heat. Option, action step three is implementing a solar panel on the roof as part of the electrical upgrade. Step four is just as a backup plan to look into some sort of used or backup boiler. And then step five is, you know, is as we work through this, you know, wait another year to, as you work through this process, to look then at what the technology for the boiler would be. Yeah, for a heat pump boiler would be.
Okay.
Oh, I move that, that the borough move forward with the next steps as outlined on page, what is it? The four of Panoni's April 18 memo. One second.
For a second? Okay. Any, all right, a discussion? Okay. So we're voting to move forward with the next steps on the Panoni memo. All those in favor? Raise your hands. Okay. All right.
I have a question. It's like just, just on to me now. Do we, it doesn't say in here that you're gonna advertise to get bids. Do we have to actually vote that it's okay for us to advertise to get bids? I, I just don't know.
I would say that step one would kind of cover that. I mean, the borough legally would have to do that.
That's what I thought. I was like, it's not, I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't some like weird.
Is that sufficient?
That's sufficient. That's the only way it could legally be done.
Okay.
So wait, do we need to, are you saying we need to submit a motion or are you?
No, you're fine.
That direction, that's the direction to presumably advertise, because that's what you would need to do by law.
Okay.
Yeah, you actually, well, I don't want to get, I'm not gonna, yeah, get too wonky, sorry.
All right.
I didn't want to get us wonky. I just wanted to make sure we weren't skipping a step.
Yeah, let's, let's not do anything illegal. That's all we're doing. Okay. Uh, action 9E.
I move that Borough Council approve the advertisement of the infill development ordinance.
For a second?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Discussion.
Sure. Just a brief introduction, but I did see that both Todd, Ressing, and Spear were online. But I would always defer to them, particularly on a sort of original, unique ordinance that the Planning Commission has been working on for a number of months because of its uniqueness and intricacies. But just some, some basic background, just to make sure everyone understands the need and purpose of this ordinance. And I think the most important thing to keep in mind is that in zoning, most zoning ordinances provide that on a single lot or a parcel, you are only allowed to have one principal building, principal building being the main building, and that being the building that someone lives in and can reside in. Now, you just passed an ordinance today that says that you can have an accessory dwelling on that same lot, but that's sort of a smaller serving dwelling to the principal building. Normally, when somebody has a larger property and they want to put a separate building, principal building, they have to go through the subdivision process. And when you go through the subdivision process, you can draw the line and you just have another parcel, a new piece of property that someone could build their house on that property. And on that property, there's requirements under our code. There's requirements that say it has to be a certain width and refer to be a proper subdivision. It has to be a proper lot size. There has to be proper setbacks from, from the building. It has to have a certain floor area for the building that would be built on that lot. And then, you know, after a subdivision, someone could build a house on that new lot. And that doesn't go through land development if it's just a single house that's done through a, through a building permit. So that's the background. And you take that and you can, you combine that with what Norworth has enacted over the summer regarding the historic district ordinance. And historic district ordinance makes it more challenging to demolish a house because of the need to preserve that house for the historical relevance of that house. And we now have a historic district under that ordinance that these houses fall under. It's my understanding that there is a desire to provide multiple interests that are in line with the comprehensive plan of the borough. The one is to just provide the opportunity to have smaller, more affordable housing in the borough. And then the second is to provide the opportunity, if you have a significantly large lot in the borough that has one of these historic resources in the historic district on the property, but you have all this land, you need to be able to do something with your property. So if there is a sufficient-sized property and we can preserve that historic resource, well, maybe there's something else that could be done for the remainder of that property that allows them to provide smaller or more affordable housing, yet still maintaining the historic nature of the property and the valued streetscape and view that, that we have come to know and love in Norworth Borough. All that being taken into consideration, the, the idea of the infill housing ordinance would be to allow multiple principal buildings on one single property if one of those principal buildings is a historic resource. So that's a unique aspect of zoning code. You will now have two properties on one lot. Now, that would be proved through a conditional use hearing, because I, and I think that would be the proper way, because Council will want to make sure a number of items, it does preserve the resource, that it is set up correctly, that it doesn't have a detrimental effect on the neighbors, on the streetscape. So that's a major aspect of this ordinance. The other is that it does provide the ability to do a subdivision when you are in the, that historic district and you have a contributing resource on your property. And subdivision resolve essentially results in the ability to have a smaller subdivided parcel or two small subdivided parcels. Now, again, there are conditions that, you know, both parcels would have had to have been wide enough for that subdivision originally and different criteria that in this code that would allow that to happen. And to take a step back, even though I keep saying the word historic district, this also then creates a zoning district that mimics the historic district. Now, if the historic district changes for the historic ordinance, we would also have to do a zoning change. It can't happen automatically. But the intent of the ordinance is that it, it follow that and that that be happening. And I do believe it provided for that intent in here. To accommodate these smaller lots or principal dwellings on the property, there are some new building types that have been proposed. One of them, and the most new, new building type is the cottage building type. The cottage building type is a, is a smaller dwelling. It's 3,000 square feet for a lot size, a maximum floor area of 1,800 square feet. And I know that there had been some back and forth over the past with that. And at the final Planning Commission review of this was 8,000 square feet. And I think that's because they did hear Council's desire to kind of keep that, 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 that. There's also a, a smaller variant of the twin housing type that can be done on the property. And again, these are only in this new historic, historic district overlay when there is a contributing resource on the property. And then with a new housing type, there are the forms that are required. There are the building designs that are required. There are the parking that are required. There's addressing issues related to corner lots or three lots. But I'm not sure if there's any other major points that I would like to, to address. But it seems that when I ever speak on these ordinances, I do always at least make one or two mistakes. And I always welcome Todd Ressi to correct me, because again, I think he and the Planning Commission, Chloe Moore, from the Montgomery County Planning Commission, really put a lot of time and work, work into this ordinance. The Planning Commission has, the Norworth Planning Commission has reviewed and is recommending this ordinance. It has been submitted to the Montgomery County Planning Commission. We haven't received comment back from them. I would hope since we had Chloe working on this from the Planning Commission that there shouldn't be anything significant. But that, that has been submitted. If Council wanted to move forward with this ordinance to advertise it tonight, just looking at the calendar, we would advertise it probably on May 2nd and 9th in the May 9 times. And then it would be for you for an acment on the May 19 business meeting. Because it's already submitted, we can make the 30-day review period, assuming that there wouldn't be any other changes. If we come, if it gets approved tonight and we come to the hearing on May 19, and there's something in that County Planning Commission letter or if there's something tonight Council wanted to change, we would have to then send it back to the County Planning Commission, much like we did with the accessory dwelling ordinance tonight for an additional review. So that's where we are. I guess Todd, if he's able to be unmuted, is there anything else he would like to say or to highlight or, or correct anything that, that I did not accurately present? John, you're not offended?
Good evening. Is that me providing the feedback?
Oh, I don't.
He's not been on this end.
John, that was masterful. I, I can think of nothing that I would suggest needs to be corrected. I would only add one thing. In the final review of this, several of the Planning Commissioners and I tested this ordinance out against several dozen lots. And the, the last fine tuning was to ensure that the number of units that could be created through these provisions would not be greater than the number of units that could have been created before the historic district ordinance was passed. So we were very attuned to not wanting to allow more intense development than would have been permitted before we passed the historic district ordinance. So it's important to tell you that we did that checking and, and built in a few provisions to make sure that wouldn't happen.
Okay, thank you, Todd. And I'll see, just print out that, uh, before our, or just after our deadline for official public comments for this meeting, we did receive, I received at least, I think everyone received, a comment from somewhere, summer night, in favor of us passing this, but also requesting that we move back to 2,000 square feet for the size of a cottage. I think that's the only mail we've received on this topic. All right. You open up for discussion.
So in the, the one thing about that letter is that, of course, that, that resident, in fact, owns a qualifying property.
Indeed.
So, and it seems like somewhat likely that they'll actually take advantage of this. So I guess the Planning Commission had debates back and forth, I attended the meetings, about 2,000 versus 1,800. It wasn't, I mean, I wouldn't say that, I mean, 2,000, they voted for 2,000, but they were not, they were not unanimously in favor of 2,000. So in the spirit of compromise, how about 1,900?
Well, I think that the issue is if we were to change it, it would need to be, it would be delayed again.
Well, I thought we hadn't advertised it yet. I would, oh, I thought we hadn't advertised it yet. We haven't advertised it, but it's gone to the planning commission.
County planning.
County planning. I'm not sure what's worth it for that.
Yeah, the reason I, I had chosen 1,800 was looking, or I suggested 1,800 is that, you know, looking at other houses in Norbert on small properties, 1,800 square feet is bigger, you know, it's a significantly bigger than average house, but it's not unusual, you know, it's like 75th percentile of house. And 2,000 square feet houses on small lots are very rare. There's only a handful of them in the entire borough. So I felt there was more in keeping with what we have in the borough. It's not unusual. All right, sorry. Back to other discussions, how to show that you know something like that.
The only thing I had, and this is, I don't think there's any way we can know the answer to this, but how, you know, we go ahead and advertise this and if the Montgomery County Planning Commission says, hey, you have changes, you have to make them, then we have to go through that again. I don't, but I don't know that that should hold us up necessarily. I'm just.
You don't, you don't have to, it's only if you want to implement those changes.
Well, that's true. That's true. Yes.
They always have recommendations.
Of course, yes, well, yeah, they had a recommendation on the ADU, which was just moving something in the ordinance. And I was like, yeah, it's nice, but too late to ask them for that. Yeah.
So it seems to me that we had a really thoughtful discussion the last time this ordinance was discussed. And now that those recommendations that the council made back to the planning commission and county have been affirmed and they're good with that, we would really have no reason to re-discuss it. I mean, discuss it further unless there's some new issue.
I hope so. I think that the reason, you know, ordinarily, I respect that argument. I think it's a good idea to wait until we have the county's letter before we move forward with this. However, there are land development projects that, you know, that would like to use these provisions and, you know, it could, it could jeopardize some historic buildings. So I feel like in this case, given that it's had extensive discussion and extensive review already as a plan, it's worth taking a risk when we may have to advertise it again.
And then there's always the option of just enacting it and then amending the ordinance. I know that on the ADU ordinance, for example, there was a discussion about putting in language about energy efficiency and not increasing carbon footprint. Again, that would be something that would apply to this ordinance as well in the future. So there is always the option of enacting it if we, if there really isn't changing to be made, making that a later, later ordinance.
All right, sorry, for whatever it's worth, I see if you want to have Todd speak further, his hand is raised.
Okay, Todd.
I just wanted to add a bit of information. While this has been solicited, excuse me, submitted to the county for its formal review as required by law, we did submit it to Chloe Moore, who conducts those reviews preliminarily for her review. She had, I think, three or four comments that John Walco and I reviewed. We were able to discuss those with Chloe and resolve those. And so her comments informally were, are baked into the, what you are seeing tonight. So we would really not expect to see anything different because she basically reviewed what you have already a couple of days ago. So I'm, I'm pretty confident the, the county's letter will not turn up new issues.
Just a point of clarification for people watching in the future or members of the public. Chloe Moore is the borough's planning person assigned to us from the Montgomery County Planning Commission, who regularly attends and participates in our Borough Planning Commission meetings.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, right now, the motion on the table is to advertise the ordinance for infill development as currently specified. All those in favor of advertising the ordinance? All right, that concludes our action items. Information items, the monthly reports have been filed and are available in the meeting packet. No items of new business. Remaining item of old business is the 201 Sabine Avenue status update.
Sure, thank you, council.
Sorry.
So, so just a brief update on, you know, what's happened, as I like to provide each month for a council and the public about where we're at with 201 Sabine. I'm really only going to go over things that changed, everything else, you know, I welcome people to read in the memo. So option one is still under consideration, which is the one to make the entire, it's labeled maximize parks and open space. No, you know, further action has been taken on that since the last meeting. Option three, proposals from community organizations. We just earlier tonight heard the proposal submitted by the Norbert Community Food Bank for council consideration. And then in regards to option four, as noted on here, we do have the, you know, the RFP to draft a non-binding RFP was sent to HRG, who we received a presentation from, the Montgomery County RDA, who we just heard a presentation from, Downtown Dynamics, who opted not to submit a, a response. Urban Partners, who opted not to submit a response and recommended we reach out to the BFW group. The BFW group, who did not respond to our request for response. And then in addition, I've been working to speak with a firm called HRNA. I do have a meeting coming up with them in the near future to talk and see if they would possibly be a fit. And if so, then I would first, would encourage them to complete the RFP and come speak to council, as we've had, you know, the food bank and the RDA do. So again, still the main decision point for option four is if council has feels they've received a, you know, RFP in order to move forward with the non-binding RFP, or if there's any additional responses we want to solicit. And I think that's really the main thing in a certain sense, holding up, you know, any kind of final, you know, decision between, or not necessarily final, any decision between option one, three and four, is we don't really know what option four is right now. So I welcome any discussion, feedback and direction from members of Borough Council. If there is any.
So the request was, should we seek out other firms for the RFP for RFP?
I, I would love to be able to say yes, and I know some, but I don't know any. So I was just like, but yes, we know some, and I'm glad that we're going to, that you're going to be talking to HRNA and we'll see what they think. Because, you know, right now, we really kind of only have two responses to this, and they're very different, you know, what, what HRG would do is very different from what Mako RDA would do.
Try to get a third?
I don't know that it is. I, that was, I don't know that it is. Because what I think I, what I feel like I heard saying was actually the stuff that the RDA generally does, like our main value add doesn't really add value to you because you don't want to sell the property.
Right.
Like you've decided not to sell. That's what we add value because we can sell it in a way that, in ways that you can't. We can get around some of the restraint, the constraints you have. They could still write an RFP for us, but not.
If they did, they would be doing it about the same way, I think, that HR, that a private, you know.
They did suggest that they, that they were focused on grants, they were heavily focused on grants. So if we decided to go around, that would involve grants.
I guess that's true.
And I would say, I mean, I would say, and again, I, I was really glad to have Rebecca here tonight, but just so we know, we're comparing apples to apples, I would point to the grant experience that HRG has and remind everyone there. And similar to how, you know, the RDA is evaluating these county grants, HRG is the body that helps evaluate the state RAP grant funding.
I forgot.
But also, I would personally speak to the issue of writing an RFP.
True. Yeah, and that's all I meant, as much as I like and, and, you know, respect the folks at HRG, I felt their, just, I mean, I'll be blunt for, you know, the public record and for council, I felt their RFP didn't, I felt it was too generic and didn't capture the specific questions we wanted to answer. And that immediately is why they have not come to present to council in regards to this and why I do not anticipate them doing so. And I have all of that, I apologize if I overset my bounds, but I basically have myself told them this much.
Would they be willing to do something more tailored?
Well, I don't think that would necessarily be fair to the other folks who responded to our.
Okay, I just wasn't sure. I mean, I'm like, I don't know where we are with that.
I mean, we could ask them to do that, but again, like I said, I don't think that would be fair to them.
I know what you're saying.
Yeah. Barbara?
Yes, so, I mean, I think what happens sometimes with firms like that is that they have a methodology that they use, like a way, like a way of thinking, and they want you to buy into their complete way of thinking. Like they want you to do it all. And if you don't do it all, it's kind of like, doesn't so much fit their model. As opposed to like, no, 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 like, see that thing like you're really good at, like, we want that. A lot of these firms don't like to do it that way. And maybe because they've had bad experiences doing that in the past, because you, you're trying to focus them too much on one thing and you didn't really think through the whole issue. And then like, it doesn't turn out so well. And they say, well, see, we told you, you should have done it like, you should have done it.
You're required to work, to rely on somebody else's groundwork. And you found that it wasn't done that well, but you, but you were stuck with it anyway.
Yeah, well, okay, that's a, that's another way of saying it.
Yes. It can be difficult.
All right, so the issue, we need to decide whether we want another group. So you want to see if somebody can find another group to present. It seems like I'm hearing yes. So try to find a third. Find another group to present.
Yeah.
Right?
Sure. It's not that easy.
That's the thing. I mean, we want, you know, she's going to have to expend effort to do this.
It's hard to find the right fit. I think that it's got to keep, to keep talking to folks and, you know, following the breadcrumbs where they lead. Like, see, I mean, this is the kind of thing where you just need to, to find the right fit, you know, a firm that's the right fit, that has municipal experience and an interest in doing this. If anybody has suggestions, I would have a suggestion to submit.
I wish I did.
I don't think, I don't think we're going to produce any, any more useful suggestions here, so.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll try to reach out to some of my peers and see if they have any suggestions. Because other, I mean, other municipalities have been involved in projects like this. So I'll see if I can find out with that. I'll report back to council, you know, probably in about a month and see, see where we're at.
Okay. Great. That concludes our business. Are there comments for the good council?
Tree planting. Forty-nine holes, right? Looking for trees? I don't know, what'd you say? A lot of trees. And then Mayor, do you want to say something about the Arbor Day?
Well, we, we are having Arbor Day celebration. Let me, calendar is, is it next Friday?
The 29th.
The 29th. I'm writing up a proclamation and hopefully we will be able to become a tree city.
So is it 4:30 to 6:00?
It is 4:30 to 5:30.
And Mayor? Mayor, if you want, you're certainly welcome to write your own. I mean, if you want, I'm welcome to send you the, the like template proclamation that the Arbor Day Foundation has, if you just want to use theirs instead of having to like, take the time to come up with your own.
That would be terrific.
Okay.
Very helpful. I have one other item to add to comments.
Try it.
Um, oh, I, I mistakenly forgot to add that we are submitting the, the monthly police report into the packet. So that is.
Thanks. And in addition, April 30th is going to be the Norbert Day celebration at the park from 12 to 4, at the Norbert Park, I should be clear, at 12 to 4, at the rain day outside of the, so I'll be there pretty much the whole time probably. Suspect other council members as well.
There will be a mayor's people as well.
Excellent. Okay. We will have an executive session after this meeting to discuss contractual personnel matters regarding COVID-19, the borough manager contractual bonus matrix, and disposition of borough property, although not Sabine. And I will now take a motion to adjourn.
We don't expect to come back.
We do not expect to come back after the executive session.
I move to adjourn.
A second. All those in favor of adjournment? All right, thank you, everybody.